Break.
And you are.
All right, Bannan County Board of Commissioners is now in session. We start with our claims today. So, Commissioner Report. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. I move that we approve the claims as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is salary rate approval forms. Doesn't look like there's anything out of the ordinary on here. I'm kinda sad, but kinda happy, though, that Riley moved from there, from the event center, out to the sheriff, which is a great add for the sheriff's department, and a loss for them. Any questions on that, John?
Nope.
All right, I move that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And alcohol licenses and permits. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the alcohol licenses as presented. Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a credit application and two expense reimbursements. And I move that we approve the expense reimbursements and the credit application as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And last is certificate of residency. And I move that we approve the certificate of residency as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. First on the list is Mr. Cobrester. Since we're talking purchasing, Shanda, do you want to come on up as well?
Hello, Commissioner. Kyle Bremerster, Bannan County Public Works.
Shanda, Crystal Chipper, procurement officer.
I just wanted to visit a little with you about our heavy equipment. We, this last year, we, our road chipper that we chipped the roads with was having a lot of problems. We limped it through the last little bit and found out that we needed about an $80,000 fix on it. That machine's 18 years old. We have budgeted for FY '25, $400,000 for a dump truck with sander and plow, but I feel we'd be better off to switch that and look at buying a chipper. But it's kind of, I need to get it before pretty quick because everything takes so long to get, so I gotta decide whether we're gonna be ordering a truck or this chipper. We've got a few options we've been working on is we can, if we can get this used one that's a year or two, year or two years old, we can hit within budget, but I don't know if that's available or not. We're, I have people looking in that right now. And the only other way would be to go out to bid. Nobody's got a source well or anything on them right now, so we'd have to go out to bid. We've asked what the prices would be if, some average costs, if we went out to bid and it'd be like $470,000. If we had to go out to bid, we would've been putting $80,000 into ours out of our maintenance budget. So, if we did have to go to bid, I was asking if we could utilize some of our maintenance money or something like that to make up the difference, whether it's $400, but it would be over. That's if we have to go to bid. If we don't, it's easier to purchase because of it being used and it would be in budget. I don't know which one's gonna be yet.
Question I have is what will that do to your truck fleet if you push off purchasing this for another year or two, potentially?
We looked at that and we'd, we'd be coming to you next budget cycle, putting that back on, but we, we looked at which is our, our most need, our priority, and it would be the chipper over the truck.
As you look at your next budget cycle purchases, what are you thinking for purchasing next year? Have you thought about that a whole lot?
Yeah, we started looking at that. We're, we've got, we wanted to put a dump truck, especially if we're doing this. We have one back hole that's very old and our transport truck trailer that we transport all the heavy equipment around is getting kinda used and old and that's kinda what we're looking at. We were gonna see about looking at pushing the chipper to next year and then, but when we got a bill of, of $80,000 to fix it, it's just, that chipper's got two different attachments on it. One, it'll chip roads and you can take all that off and, and we have a shouldering machine that goes on the front of it. So, depending on what its value would be, is we kinda like, I'd like to keep it and use it, keep using it as a shoulder machine because the new chipper's don't have that option.
So, if you kept it, would you still have to put the $80,000 into it?
No, no. It's all in the part of all the mechanical of shutting off all them because they have all them openings that open and shut and all that where you take all that off and you just put the shouldering head on it. So, it would still be of pretty good value to us, being a shoulder machine.
If you put the $80,000 into it, how long will that extend its life?
The, the hard part we have with it is it was, it's a smaller company we bought it from. We can't get it fixed anywhere else and then they don't have, they've been down on people's mechanics and stuff like that, technicians, so it's almost like we can't get it fixed. So, I, I, at one point, we're thinking, well, maybe the $80,000 would be okay and we were looking at going through a dealer, or a equipment dealer, a different one, and they were gonna refurbish the whole rig. And so then, the $80,000 kinda made sense, but we found out that they have a legal clause in there that we cannot take it anywhere but them, but they can't fix it, so.
So, if you own the equipment, why do they have a clause that says you can't take it anywhere else?
It's a manufacturing, I don't know.
Have you had legal review that?
We have not. We've just, I, that's just what I've got from asking others to work on it. Western States was gonna work on it and then looked into it and that's who let us know that, that they, they wanted the job, they wanted to do the work on it, but they couldn't.
Interesting.
So, it's just kinda getting away from, you know, there's some other counties that have one of these and they're kinda disappointed, but they're running into the same problem. So, it's trying to get to a piece of machinery that's more mainstream of what everybody's kinda using and you can get it fixed everywhere and, and have a little more accessibility to parts and stuff.
So, would you eventually buy a shouldering piece for this new?
I don't know if they make them anymore for them. Now they've went to a different system because the, the old chipper that we have is like a solid, it's set at one width, where the new ones have twin, twin heads on the front and they just automatically, if you wanna widen it or not, it's just a push of a button and they'll go from like nine feet to 18, 20 feet wide, which is the, so it's a lot more on there, so I don't, I haven't seen that. I don't know if there is an option or not.
So, what's the benefit of the edger for us then?
The shoulder.
Shoulder, yeah.
In the past, we've dumped trucks right on the, on the road and then you have to try to blade that out, that pile, and spread it out and make some mess. You gotta keep doing a bunch of brooming, it takes a lot. Where this, the truck will pull into it just like you're chipping the roads, so you pull in and it pulls the truck backwards. So, it does the same thing. You dump a shoulder material instead of the chips, it goes up the conveyors and instead of going into that head that has all the air openings, it's just an auger that sends it out the side and just makes a little windrow down the side of the road and it has a little blade on the side that will knock it down. So, if you need to, if your shoulders have a deep hole or something, it, it, it works really well for that.
Going back to Christie's question about extending the life, I understand there's this issue with the legal clauses and so on, but if you did get it fixed, do you have an estimate about how long this thing would last?
The rest of the machine's pretty good shape.
So, a decade, two years?
It could, it could last another five or six years, probably, maybe longer, I don't know.
How soon do you, I guess you got a little bit of time, at least a couple of weeks, I would guess, that you, before you'd have to get an order in to get it for the next season, something like that, what do you think?
If we went out to bid, we would be very lucky if, right now, we'll be right when we're chipping, when we might see it.
So, you might not even get it in time, even if we go out to bid right now?
If we have to go out to bid, yes.
And you start chipping next season when?
Um, June. It's like six months out, once you order it, and if we're a month or something on the...
So, I ran the tightest bidding schedule I could for a formal bid and we're looking at four to five weeks to get it put out, have people respond back in, get it back before the board, and then contract and get it actually ordered.
And there's no other purchasing contracts we can piggyback off of?
So, there are some. We looked at a couple of different houses, buddy. One of them is by board. It's not, Bannan County doesn't currently participate in that one, but it's very similar to Omni or Sourcewell, something like that, but we would need to go through procurement and legal review before then. We recommended that the board would accept that and before that we could purchase there. There, on occasion, as we go through some of those co-ups, there's additional fees because somebody else already put it out to bid and they get a chunk of it. So, sometimes in our area, we can get it cheaper going different routes and potentially this is one of those, that if we went the by-board route, it would be more expensive for Bannan County than it would be to bid it. So, then we ran the tight calendar to see how we could do that. Kyle didn't mention used. Any repairs, if they could be able to make, those repairs are exempt from bidding, so that wouldn't cause any problems there. And if they're looking at used equipment, that is also exempt from bidding. So, if the decision was made today to buy a used equipment and there was something on the lot that we could pick up, he could buy it today and, and be done.
But you haven't found a used one yet?
There's a couple in Utah. We're just having the, they have their own areas that they sell, so they have to see if they can move it. So, I can't just go right to them and buy it because we're out of their area. So, I have Western States looking. It's at a cat dealer in Utah and he thinks he can get it moved to here to where we can buy it. And they're around $380,000 is what that couple-year-old one costs.
And would you anticipate getting another 15-plus years out of something like that?
Yeah, 20, 15, 20 years. This one, like I say, with, with what our maintenance is on the machine itself, is not too bad. It's, it's all the electrical because they're so automated that they, that's what the $80,000 is, is completely take all electric off of it and put all new on it. But I just don't like the fact that you can't have somebody look at it and then they're so small that you are lucky if you can get it fixed, if something goes down with the new electrical versus warranty and, and dealers that will...
Is the, I guess I'd have to see the contract. Is the issue with the contract that you void your warranty if you go outside of their service, is that the issue or is it absolutely forbidden?
They, as far as what I got out of it is they can't, they have a, some deal in there that it has to be worked on by, I don't know, I'd have to look more into it.
Let's, let's, this is what I'm gonna suggest. Let's look at the contract. I'd like to see it, send it to Brian, and, and we should do that anyway, regardless of what other decision we make. Let's take a look at this contract. If we have clauses like that, that's certainly something we have to make sure in the future we're not getting, if we can avoid it, the, in a clause like that, but maybe it's just an issue of voiding a warranty. I've seen this before with, you void your warranty, I can't recall.
You gotta be outside of the warranty period.
Right. So, that, so it may be a non-issue, but we'll have to see the contract to know for sure.
So, if you, if you look at the contract, do you have a direction that you would prefer to lean?
Because the only thing is too, if we do the contract, by the time we get legal to look at it, you're gonna be a month again down the road.
Send me the contract. It sounds like, and Christie, you're best with the numbers, but it sounds like the best alternative, if we can get another five or six years out of it, would be to get it fixed. And I think you're saying that if we didn't have to go to this company that made this thing, it would be less expensive, not $80,000, is that right?
It'd still be $80,000, but we get a lot more for the $80,000. So, the company that builds it is $80,000 just for the wiring and if we take it to Western States, they, this West...
They'll refurbish the whole thing?
They refurbish the whole machine.
So...
So, it's like a new machine, but we can't, they can't do it.
So, anyway, the, since I'm getting, Christine, you correct me if I'm mistaken, but it sounds like that would be the best bang for a buck to extend this life over several years rather than spending 400 grand outright. What do you think?
I, financially, that would make sense, but I don't run the equipment, I don't know the equipment, so I don't wanna miss.
I'm going by what he's telling me. So, I don't know anything about these.
To me, it sounds like, yes, but I...
But it isn't, it isn't the same machine, though. I mean, you're talking about a 20-year-old machine versus a new machine.
Yep, I got you there.
Well, that's kinda my question is, how have the prices of these machines gone over the last few years? Because if we're spending $80,000 now, then we gotta come back in five to seven years and spend another, maybe it's $500,000 or $600,000 by then. I, I don't know. I agree that in the short term, it makes sense to do it this way, but in the long term, are we better off buying a piece of equipment that will cost us $400,000 now opposed to $600,000 or $500,000 later?
This is the first major thing we've had with this. It's in that many years, so there's not a lot of stuff that we've had issues with.
I'm willing to roll the dice on just spending the $80,000 if we can do that.
I'm sorry?
I'm willing to spend the $80,000 and see what more we can get out of it. I think that's a reasonable path forward, if we can do that.
Yeah, but let's look at the contract. Maybe, maybe there is a way.
Yeah, if we're going...
What it says.
If we're going in that direction, I'll get, you know, more on why can't we have them refurbish it?
Yeah.
And see, and get that to you and legal and see what's going on there.
Because it sounds to me like it's a pretty solid piece of equipment, spent in low maintenance.
Yeah, if, that's why I was at, if they could refurbish it, then I can see the $80,000, you know? It's just hard for me to picture electrical wires and a couple software components for it, being 80, but...
Okay. Get Commissioner Crowder the contract and we'll have another discussion.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shanda, you're up.
I've got four items before the board today. The first one, if we can start with, I am requesting a signature on a contract with T-Town west of Idaho for the Fairgrounds Exhibit Hall Steel Building Project that we were, that they were awarded. They have submitted all their documentations, their bond, their insurance, their UEI number, et cetera, and it's been through legal review and is ready for review and potential signature from the board. Oh, I apologize, there is something I wanted to bring up. The original bid was awarded at $615,815. There was found in that bid that they had included the cost of windows in there. That was initially part of, Dan and his crew wanted to do matching doors and windows in there, so we asked them to remove that. That is why that there's a different dollar amount on this contract at $612,091. That's why there's the difference in there.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Dan initially was gonna, you guys were gonna handle that aspect of it?
They, for whatever reason, included some aluminum window frames but not the aluminum door frames. I'd like to have them all from the same vendor.
So, you're good with this change?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and sign the contract as presented.
I have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
The second item I have before the board is requesting signatures on change orders with CM Company. These are ones that we have discussed previously. Change order number two is the soft spots in the road that were repaired. They have completed all of those repairs and those come to $13,918. That is one change order ahead of you. It has been reviewed by our architects and approved as such. And the second change order, number three, is the asphalt patch at the north end of the street and that change order comes to $1,117. Again, it's been reviewed by our architect and is ready for the board's signature if approved.
Any questions?
No.
Now, I'll entertain a motion, or actually, I'll just make the motion to approve change order two and three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 The next item I have before the board is a request for signature on a contract with Summit Fire and Security. This is the company that is making the connection, the switch over in the communications for the jail. There has been a little back and forth between their legal company and our civil counsel. They have made all required requests and changes as far as Mr. Trammell was concerned and it's before the board for signature.
This just has Ernie's signature on it. Is that okay? I mean, we can authorize Chair to sign it when he gets back?
Is that, if that's, is it Christie's handwriting? Because mine doesn't have a name on it.
It does have Ernie's and it looks like Christie's handwriting, yes.
I would prefer, if it's okay with the board, if I print out a clean copy when I get downstairs and make the motion to have one of you gentlemen sign it during this meeting, if that's okay. There's just been some holdup on the project. We would like to get on their schedule to get them to come and, at a time that works with the jail. So, the quicker I can get this to them, the better.
Okay. I have a few are, sorry to interrupt me. Okay. Do you want to make a motion then?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the contract and authorize Commissioner Moser to sign the contract in Commissioner Moser's place.
Okay, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'll have a clean copy ready for you. The last item I have before the board is a procurement update. If you want to start at the top of the dashboard for the Fairgrounds project, we did receive the drawings for the electrical and so that has been issued yesterday. So, it went live and went out to some electrical companies. I think I have six of them here in town that have been invited to participate in that. If we drop down to the communications upgrade for the detention center, this contract that was signed will allow us to get on their calendar and we're hoping to begin that switch over in November to make sure. We have an ARPA project kind of waiting in the wings just to make sure that that switch over goes well, so that timing is critical to get the rest of those projects under contract and moving.
How much is the contract for the communications upgrade?
1.1...
This was 116,800. Thank you.
For this perceived pot.
It's like 1.1 million or something like that?
That's the whole project, 116...
That's what we signed today, was 116.
Eight.
Yep, your upgrade, your report has the wrong number there, so...
The communications upgrade project is a lot of moving pieces and parts, so we've got this 116, eight plus...
No, it was just a typo, is all I'm pointing out.
Oh, okay.
It's just a typo.
If we drop down to the active bids, the exhibit hall fire suppression and the ceiling projects, those both, both were posted live last week and they have questions due on Monday for those, as well as the, why do you see, Youth Development Center. There we go, the Youth Development Center Event Center Office Building Request for Proposal along with the tactical training remodel. Those are both due, bids are due on Monday. We have had quite a bit of activity on those and as more contractors are interested in it, then they suppo, give us more questions, which is great to clarify, but I'll issue another addendum on both of those projects today. I just got another email on it, but those will get issued out today. That will be the final one. I don't like to change them too close to the due date, but this will be the final one. They'll have two working days, three working days to get it done and back to us on Monday. And the final one is the jail asphalt repair. I have been contacted by, that was awarded to Superior Asphalt, the project was, and I, they reported back to me that they should have all their required documents either tomorrow or maybe Monday at the latest, so that should come back before the board next week for signature. And if there were any questions?
No, good. Thank you.
I did the last thing. I just want to thank Christie and Nancy for meeting with me yesterday. We did go through ARPA project by ARPA project, just making sure we were on track. We did find a couple of things, right, that we want to just vet out, make sure that we're on track as far as some of the projects that potentially we thought were done, haven't been done yet, so I am grateful for that and feel that confident that we will be able to meet all the federal guidelines by the end of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Claussen.
Okay, Chris Claussen, controller. I have for the board the engagement letter from Whitely for our FY '24 audit. This was emailed to Commissioner Moser and myself. They want a docu-sign signature on this, so I wanted to review it real quick with you and then give approval for Commissioner Moser to sign it when he returns. The main fee for the engagement is $49,000. They will charge potentially some travel expenses since they're in Idaho Falls. They come here for the day, depending on who they bring, how many they bring, will pay mileage and possibly expenses associated with that equal to, and then they have another fee potentially of 6% of the professional fees that they could add on top of this. There will also be a $6,500 charge for essentially the equivalent of a single audit because right now we really don't have any other federal funds that exceed $75,000. We do have ARPA. Instead of doing a single audit, we will do this coronavirus safe state and local fiscal recovery funds compliance report, which is the same thing they did last year, but they'll charge $6,500 for that. Other expenses could come up depending on how easily I provide them information and if it takes how much time, which we always do our best to accommodate a same-day response if possible. Within this engagement letter, it just does the normal, management's responsible for making available drafts of the financial statements. I do need to clarify with them, last year we had engaged with them to write the financials. They charged us some money for that. We ended up not using their financials because they did not have them tied out appropriately and their numbers didn't match mine and mine are the numbers, not theirs. So, we'll see how that's gonna work this year. Also, I'm responsible for providing them supplementary information notes, basically all the site information that goes in there. They do have other, other services that they may prepare a draft of our financials, so I think that still is a potential, but I'll have to clarify that with Fred. If they don't do it, I'm assuming they won't charge us for it. One item on here I do need to clarify with him is, he states that they will provide fixed asset depreciation schedules. They don't do that. Basically, I do all of the numbers and they put them in their financials, so I'm not sure.
So, you need to make a little bit of adjustments to what's...
I just need to clarify, it's not gonna change costs, so I think we're gonna be fine. The one thing I did not see in here is they do all of our lease accounting for us and that I did not see in here. So, I'm gonna get those quick clarifications before Commissioner Moser signs it. I don't anticipate a lot of changes, but we will want to get this signed so that we can get moving forward with...
Would the lease things be a material change?
Should not be because I did it last year and it was included in the price.
Okay.
One thing I do want to point out is we only budgeted $50,000 for the audit... One thing I do want to point out is we only budgeted $50,000 for the audit and right now with the hard costs that they've defined, it's 55.5. So we will be dipping into other light items, whether it be potential litigation line or the grant match budget. I'm way too early to have the juvenile detention billing. I won't have that until December. In the past, we've had some savings, but we've not had the savings we used to have, so I do not want to count on those. But the potential litigation and the grant match funds are arbitrary enough that if I needed to allocate those down, we could.
So it doesn't sound like it would be particularly difficult to cross off things they're not gonna do, put in things they are gonna do and make sure in the actual contract it specifies exactly what they're gonna do?
Yeah, and we could do that and then I could, we could have Ernie wait and we could have a final. I apologize, I've been working on fixed assets, so I have not reviewed this until this morning. I probably should've pulled it.
No worries, but I always want our contracts to be precise.
Okay, so I apologize. I'll just email Ernie and tell him not to sign it yet and I'll clarify with Fred on some of these items. Sorry, that was a waste of five minutes.
You're good. We'll just shelf it, no stress, no stress at all. All right, we've got a couple last little things that we need to ratify. Commissioner Moser signed some alcohol licenses last week, so we just need to ratify that. So I'll make a motion, since my signature's not on here, that we ratify the signatures from 10/17 on the alcohol licenses. Okay with that? All in favors, what?
I'm just gonna tell you why it was missed. They just didn't get taken down to your office to be brought up. It was on the agenda and because we're up to the deadline of 10/31, that's why you're ratifying it.
I remember that, I got to bring it in, so...
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And am I supposed to check with you on this? Is that for Emma?
Oh, and I thought this had already been, oh, I, yes. That is just to sign the light for Emma to go back to North Carolina that's gonna be paid out of the grant. We just didn't have the grant identified when Christie put this together, so if you'll just sign it, we'll put the appropriate coding on it.
And then one last question, I just saw this invoice for Dioptra.
Oh, that's just an ARPA invoice. It probably got lost.
I was just tagging the back of this. I just wanted to make sure.
It got managed to be signed on Tuesday.
All right, so we'll do these in two separate ones. So I'll move that we authorize payment, the card receipt for Emma because it's from a grant that we now have.
Honestly, those are just normal invoices that just got signed and approved.
All right, I'll move that we approve invoices as presented them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I believe that wraps it up.